I've been ready for 10 minutes.
It was my fault.
It was your fault?
Yeah, my fault.
Perfect.
Good evening. We're going to go ahead and call the Clovis City Council meeting to order for August 11, 2025 at 6:01 PM. And if you would all rise, our Mayor Pro Tem Diane Pierce will lead us in the pledge for the flag salute. If we can get roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Ashbeck?
Here.
Councilmember Baskel?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bessenger?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pierce?
Here.
And Mayor Moanatua?
Here. This time, we're going to go ahead, go into public comments. If you would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda, let me do so at this time. You have three minutes. If you could state your name and give your address for the record, we would appreciate that.
I'm Jenny Crenn, and I live on Bullard Avenue, but I do own a home on Enterprise also. And so, two things. One is there's a median area on what Silmar goes into Herndon. It's, no, not Herndon, excuse me, goes into Nice. And it's on the north side. The trees have all been taken out, and it's quite an eyesore. And I'm just kind of wondering if there's a plan to fix it. It looks awful.
Jenny, the mayor was talking to me. It was his fault. I couldn't hear you. Would you tell me where again? Sorry. Where did you? I had to blame it on someone. No, I'm kidding.
Somewhere in Silmar and Nice. We were just talking about this intersection because it's right next to the Muslim school, you know.
Oh, 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 got it. Got it. Okay.
That's the one that they're doing U-turns around.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
But all the trees are, all the trees are gone, and it looks, it looks very ugly. And then the other thing is the, as I was driving over here from there, a, at the intersection of Villa and Sierra, heading south, the red light on the stoplight on the left lane doesn't work, and it hasn't worked. I mean, last week, it wasn't working either. So, just want to make sure you guys know. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And I think staff noted that, so we'll take a look at that as well. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Trevino. I live on Bullard. Just recently, there was an accident, again, on Fowler and Bullard. And, and I've noticed within the last few years, there's been a lot of accidents in that intersection. And school's going to start again. Clovis High School, Clark Intermediate, there's going to be kids going back and forth. It doesn't seem to me like the traffic has been addressed. I've asked for crosswalks. It hasn't happened. I was thinking to myself the other day, maybe there should be a runabout there on Bullard and Fowler, or somewhere in that area. Something really needs to be done before someone gets run over or killed. I've addressed the city council many times about this. You know, something really needs to, something really needs to happen. You know, and I hope that someone's not going to get hurt or killed before the city of Clovis does something about it. I don't see, I don't see the problem with putting a couple of crosswalks on Bullard or Barstow. I don't see, I don't see, I haven't heard any explanation from the city of Clovis, or the traffic engineers, or the Clovis Police Department, as to why it hasn't happened. This, all you got to do is go over there in the mornings, when school's on, you'll see all these. Just as a matter of fact, right now, I was walking over here, and there was a kid riding a scooter. He came off, came off of music, and dashed right into Fifth Street by the church, and bang, he was gone. And I don't think these things are, I've heard somebody talk about it on the news, but to me, it's not being addressed. If we're going to have more deaths this year, we need to do something. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Anyone else?
Bill Scott, 341 Evergreen. I wasn't going to say anything, but what he mentioned about scooters, a couple of months ago, I was going east on Bullard towards Armstrong at night, and I just saw this little flash go across the street. It just kind of caught my care. What was that? And as I turned on Armstrong, I didn't see anything. It was, it turned out, it was a guy on a scooter that had a little light down on the, on the back wheel. And if that hadn't have caught my attention going, I would never have seen him until I was right on top of him. I don't know if there's any way you can put a law, you know, some kind of law that you got to have a vest on with a light on it at night when you're driving those, because I literally couldn't see him, except for it had piqued my interest, and I was looking for it. And, you know, if you're not, if you don't see it, you could run right up on somebody like that. So, yeah, that might be something to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anyone else like to address the council, something that's not on the agenda? Seenon, we're going to go ahead and move now to the consent calendar. We have six items on consent. And so, consent items are items that are routine in nature, and they'll be heard as one unless a council member requests separate consideration of any of the items. And so, anyone on the council like to pull an item? Okay. Is anyone in the public here to speak on items one through or comment on one through six at all, any of the consent items? Okay. Seenon, we're being back to the council. It's the pleasure of the council.
For approval for the consent items one through six.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent items one through six? And if I was saying, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First item tonight is an administrative item. It is item number seven, discussion of term limits for city council members. And to provide direction to staff, staff on this is Brianna Parr, our city clerk. Brianna?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, at the April 14 council meeting, there was a consensus to bring back a discussion on potential term limits for council members. And under Government Code Section 36502B, cities that are either general law or charter cities may adopt term limits for council members. A city may limit the number of terms a member of the city council may serve on this city council, and a term limit would only apply to future terms that would take effect only if approved by voters at a regular election. If council does move forward with a term ballot measure, it could cost about $100,000 or more to place it on the regular ballot. This concludes my presentation. We do not have recommendations at this time, and staff is seeking council direction on whether to move forward with a drafting proposed measure and what details it should include.
The council's okay. We're going to, for these next three items, going to take public comment, and then a lot of it is going to be our discussion, but let's hear from the public first, and then that way, we can have their input before we discuss it internally. So, we're going to go ahead and open the public portion now, and then council will discuss after we hear from the public regarding term limits.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I saw this on the agenda, and I definitely have to comment. Mike Brandini, 2062 Alamos, Clovis. I was city clerk for the city of Clovis for over 20 years. And during that time, we held our own elections. The, in each two-year, there was an election, and the council members, two or three, as their cycle went, they stood for reelection. Now, in my mind, that is a term limit. You're, you have to get reelected. You got to get the population to support you. You got to raise funds in order to campaign. And obviously, there's a lot of regulations on campaign funding, but for the, the council to have to have, there's pros and, obviously, pros and cons with that, because you, you get new people all the time. But in my mind, that's a con. It takes you one term just to find out where the restroom is. So, you can't really understand the operation of the city until that second and sometimes even third term, because as you, the second item you've got on discussion, that item has been discussed for years by the city council. Way back in the 80s, they talked about it.
The charter city?
The charter city. And the reason they didn't do it, because there weren't enough pluses. And I don't think there are enough pluses on that item either, to implement a charter city amendment. Number one, you got to get the, get a charter, and I understand the charters from charter laws from when I was around have changed. It's a lot more, much simpler to do it now than it was before. But from what I, what I see in the government code, and what I understand of the government code and the charters, it doesn't make a hell of a lot of difference. In fact, you may lose some benefits by going a charter city instead of a general law city. So, if you decide to go that way, I'm sure your city manager will provide a very comprehensive report, along with your city attorney, to give you the pros and cons, and hopefully, they would make a recommendation based on the information and the facts they find. But I would be interested to see what happens on that, for sure. But I don't think it's necessary to go to charter city. General law city's got all, all the power you need in terms of developing ordinances and your general plan, and none of that changes under a charter city, as far as I understand it, unless I'm incorrect. I'll ask the city attorney, am I correct on that in terms of general plan use and zoning? You don't have any more power under a charter city than in your general law.
We'll discuss that at the next item, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We'll discuss this one.
No problem. But again, I just don't see any need to go to term limits, because there's automatic term limits every, for each council member every four years. Now, if you're a good council member, I think you ought to stay around. If you're a bad council member, the public will know, and they'll get rid of you, which has happened before. And, you know, if the council member gets tired of serving, he can retire, or she can retire, whatever. But in my mind, there's really no, as my wife, my wife has always said, there's no need. So, I appreciate you allowing me to comment, and thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm still Jenny Crenn.
And the trees are still dead on Bullard.
Yeah. But I also, speaking on the term limits, I agree with what Mike said is that they, you know, there is a natural term limitation if you don't do a good job and you get moved out. I adored Harry. He, I considered him a friend. He maybe pushed the limit a little bit in the length of time he was in office, but, you know, I mean, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and I still can't read the packet. It's, they're so complicated, and that there really is a learning curve, and it's, it's probably more than eight years. I wouldn't, I'm not, you know, really willing to say beyond that what it is, but it probably takes, you know, eight years to get, really get your footing. And so, I don't, I, I think we've done well with what we've had. We've had, there's several people up here right now who've served more than a couple of terms, and I appreciate the good work that they do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Hi there. Neil Stahler, 2620 Sample Avenue, Clovis, California. As far as all of you, I think that all of you have been exceptional public servants. So, if I was to base my comment on term limits based on all of you up here, I'd say, no, no way. However, being someone retired from the Bay Area, and where they have an infection of woke-ism, it's something we might want to look at potentially eight, eight, 12 years, as far as term limits, just to make sure we do turn things around. Something I would consider more than term limits actually will be sunset on all, all city ordinances, let's say 10 years. So, this way, it's kind of like, it forces you to go look at the ordinances that you have on the books, and if they're good ordinances, you renew them with improvements. But if they're not so good ordinances that got passed and turned out, didn't work out as planned, then they'll just naturally expire. So, you know, good, it's always good that we have a turnover. Yes, I understand that we don't, we don't want to be losing good people. And for you guys, all of you, you guys are great people, which causes me problems, because I, I've seen the other, the flip side. So, just something to consider.
Thank you. Thank you, Neil.
Steven Trevino. I live on Bullard. I want to give my two cents, if I could. I've lived here my whole life. I'm 60, I just turned 68 this year, and I noticed Joe Flores was the mayor before, and, and we had some other people that were, they were on the city council for years. And I, I noticed people don't vote. For a long time, people never voted. And, and the city, the city elections used to be, just here in Clovis, they weren't included with the presidential election or the governor's election. So, no one ever voted. The last election, it was the mayor and, and, and then Asbeck. It was just you two. It was nobody else. Nobody ran. I'm, I'm hoping that the next terms, we're, we're going to have districts, maybe more people will run, and, and things may, may be different, you know. Maybe more people may run, and, and things will be a little bit more exciting, you know, for all of you. But, but I, I, I felt, I feel that, that some of the, the people that were here in the city council maybe had too much power. And a lot of us, I mean, look, how many empty seats are in here tonight? People don't care. As long as the police and the fire department come within five minutes, you know. And, and I remember one of the elections, one of my sister was saying, she voted for, for Mr. Baskel. He goes, I'm voting, voting for these two, because they're, they're police chiefs. They were in the police department. That's the only reason why she voted for you guys, you know. And, and people don't, you know, it's funny why people vote for each other. They vote, they vote because they, they listen to KMJ, and, and they see this young lady, and she's a, she comes on the radio, and they say, yeah, I'm voting for her, you know. I like what she says on the radio, you know. People really don't know what's going on in the city. Just today, one of my nieces went out to Shaw Avenue in Leonard, and she goes, wow, this is interesting. I didn't even know this was here, you know. Yeah, Roma Linda, I told her, you know. And, and so, I don't like it, because it is, I don't feel like I'm in Clovis, you know. But you guys have made some, there's been some very big decisions made by the city council. And, and whether there should be term limits, I don't know. I mean, but, but anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Trevino. Anyone else? Okay, Seenon, we're going to bring, bring you back to the council. And so, this is something we, we can determine, and then I think it'll go back to the voters if we should change it, or, yeah. Any thoughts or comments on the council?
There, I, there are pros and cons with term limits. I think we saw a number of elections here where there was, nobody threw their hat in the ring, because they would be, have to go head to head with an incumbent who had name recognition, had, you know, a political war chest, which makes it difficult for those of you who have never run for office. It's not free. And, you know, even if you're running a bare bones campaign, which is my plan to do, I'm still going to have to raise about $20,000 to $25,000. And it, you know, and, and in the last election, we had people who spent, I think upwards of almost $100,000, and came in number six, or somewheres around there. So, it's pretty expensive. And with us going to districts, that will probably change the way we do things. At least, running for office is going to be easier, because you have fewer, fewer doors to knock on, fewer mailers to mail out, so it'll be cheaper, and you'll be able to do, probably, it, it definitely helps someone who is motivated, who comes to meetings. They can set up a folding chair in their garage, folding table, and probably run a pretty good campaign and potentially could win. I, I think that's, that's a good thing. But it takes, it takes four years at least to get, at least for me, the land use stuff was, was the big, the big learning curve. I've been in law enforcement for, and, and working for cities for 30-plus years, but the land use part of it, understanding all that was the big thing. So, if you do eight, you know, I, I wouldn't support eight-year one, maybe 12 potentially. But the other side of the coin is you have people who come in early, and they do their eight years, and we see in other jurisdictions where the only thing they can do is either back out of politics completely, or they start running for higher office. And I don't want to see the Clovis City Council become a running board for somebody to run for Board of Supervisors or state-elected positions, because I, I just think it's bad, or potentially bad. So, I mean, there's a lot of pros and cons here. I would actually think we should probably look at how the district elections shake out, and then talk about this in 2026, 2027. That's just my, my opinion.
Thank you, Drew. Mayor?
Matt? Yeah, I mean, so obviously I brought this up when we did bring it up and talking about term limits and stuff. And I'm kind of the opposite of opinion in thinking that, you know, we should look at term limits, especially with going of districts. I think that's more so kind of where I was looking at from the standpoint that it will be different. And, you know, I, I don't necessarily agree that it takes us four years to learn what we're doing on council, but it does take a little bit of time to get your feet wet and, and figure out what's going on. But there's also, I mean, there's a lot of reliability on staff and those kinds of things. So I, I just think from, you know, reading articles and different things that are out there, I mean, it is a big push from citizens within California. I mean, it's seventy-seven percent in an article in 24 said they wanted term limits on local officials. So, and granted, that was directed more towards Board of Supervisors positions and didn't specifically go towards city council. So I'm, it's not a ten for me. Obviously, I'm not doing this again, so it doesn't, you know, it doesn't affect me either way.
You've got your own term limit.
Yeah, I made my own term limit. But with that said, I mean, I, I would like to see us consider doing a poll of some sort and see what the citizens really want. I mean, this is really something for, when I bring it up, I meant it more for the citizens to vote and tell us what they think. Do you think we should have term limits going forward? And, you know, is there a way for us to do a poll before spending a hundred thousand dollars on an election? Can we put something out there and, you know, kind of like we did with Measure Y and some of the other things where we got feedback from our citizens to say, yes, this is what I want or no, this isn't what I want? We had a few people speak tonight and it was kind of a fifty-fifty, just here with our small group. So, and if it was fifty-fifty, then maybe that's not something we would spend money on going forward. But if it's seventy-five, eighty percent of the citizens of Clovis come back and say, yeah, I think we should have term limits going forward for the city and then we decide is that eight years or 12 years or whatever it may be, then I would like them to be able to make that decision. I think that's where I was coming from for this.
Any other thoughts from council? Go ahead.
I think, I think for me, the underlying problem we're trying to solve is, for me anyway, I'll speak for myself, I'm afraid sometimes of people we elect, not here, but generally. I think there's a fear of like, oh my God, I don't know what to do. And so the only way to, and you, several of you said, nobody cares and nobody votes. So, and nobody, fewer people are going to, you need fewer votes to get elected in a district. The districts are twenty-five thousand people, give or take. If twenty percent show up, can win with four thousand votes, that's nothing. So that's what scares me about, and that's, I can't protect us against that, but that is my worry. That's the advantage I see of limiting because if people don't care and people don't vote, you get what you vote for. And I, that, that does worry me in, at every level of government. So that's the only thing that I think about, but I also think that I would love to, I don't know what the tools are. I know some cities have, you know, interesting technology platforms to get a pulse of the community. It would be curious to know. It's not really our call. We serve you, so we hear how few of you think, but what is the, what does the majority of folks think? If people say, yep, been there too long, no, we'll never have another Harry Armstrong, that's probably a true fact. I might be the end of that road here at some point, but I mean, it's, 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 I think people could, should weigh in. I'd love to know what, what our citizens say. And I just saw an interesting article, I think it was in Knoxville. They use a platform called Jigsaw, which allows kind of community voice to be amplified on a regular basis. So maybe there's something like that we could test out, but I think we'll see what districts bring. But to me, it's a protective factor against what I see as a general decline in the quality of elected officials on the planet. So, but I'm not sure I'm ready to go there today for the city of Clovis.
Thank you. Good, Mayor Portman.
Oh, do I want more thing? It's not a hundred thousand dollars. That'd be the cost of the election that we're going to do anyway. The next election we would do would be in 2026, right? So you put on the same ballot as your, so I think it's probably not fair to say it's going to cost us a hundred thousand to just, if it was just that issue, right? Is that what you mean by that?
Yeah, it's not just for that issue, it's just in general. So that would be for like-
Right. We're going to have an election anyway, we're going to spend a hundred thousand, so we could put it on that ballot if we were so inclined when 26 comes along. But it's, I, it's a little bit misleading to say the cost for that is a hundred grand because it's not. It would be part of the regular ballot. Sorry. Thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I, first off, I, I'm a little bit on the same page where it's like, I can kind of go either way because I see the pros and the cons. I certainly agree with Councilmember Besseger that I think two, four-year terms or eight years would be too short. So if that was something we wanted to entertain, my personal opinion would be to start at a talk of 12 years or three terms. But again, just kind of hearing from the public too, I think there is a sense that one of the reasons I think people didn't throw their hat in the ring, one of the reasons people didn't vote in some of these other elections is because they felt like everything was going well and they felt confident in the city council that they had and the people they had elected. And so there, there is a sense like Jenny Kren said, that, that's the term limits. And I think Mike said the same thing. It's like the voters set that term. Now, I feel a little bit hypocritical saying that because I think Congress needs term limits and they have the same argument, you know, that the people can turn them out every two years. But I, I definitely see the benefit to, and again, when we look at some of these other jurisdictions and that, whether it's the city of Fresno, whether it's, you know, the Fresno County Board of Supervisors or, you know, even our state legislature, assembly and senate, it's an entirely different thing. I mean, it's really kind of apples and oranges when you look at what we do, the scope of what we undertake, how much trust and responsibility we put on staff and, and things like that. So I'm, I'm fine not going forward with this issue, maybe again, tabling it and seeing where things are with districts, how that affects things and that type of thing. But if that is something that the, the consensus of this council is, then again, I think it, it should at least be three terms and I'd be open to, you know, more than that as well. But I'm not sure this is the time to, to go down this road.
Go ahead, Drew.
You know, with, with both Lynn and Matt's comments, I, I think if, if we can do a community poll and maybe, maybe I write the, why this is a, I write my pros and cons, Matt writes his pros and cons, or if we, if we were the ones selected to write the thing, and then we just throw it up and say, what do you all think? I, I like that idea, that's democracy in action. Obviously, it'll be, it won't be necessarily accurate, but it'll give us a, a bellwether for what, what we might consider doing. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, my, my thoughts are with regards to term limits is, I think this, the epitome of, of government is on the local level because I think we can't compare ourselves to the state and to the feds because it's, it's hard to grasp everybody at that level to make the election your term limit. But here, you can. If you work hard enough, you can be outmonied, outendorsed and you can still win because you, you reach the people. And I think the past, you know, with Councilmember Ashbeck and those who have served longer terms, it's, it's a testament to the quality of the people who have served in this community. And me coming in, and this is already my third term, I look at it, you really need people who know the community, who develop those relationships. Clovis is a community and if you give people only eight years, they will not have that relationship. They won't know what boot is, they won't know what the rodeo stands for. They will come in and try to overthrow the road because they don't like animals being tortured. But someone who has been here a long time, who knows the community and who has lived and worked closely will go, oh no, I'm going to support them, I'm going to support Clovis Unified, I'm going to support these things that are Clovis. And you get that stability, which is important for the city of Clovis. And those relationships really, it takes time to build and to, to understand and to see how those relationships work. So looking just at the history, I have, I have not paid attention to, prior to me coming on the council, if there have been council members that the community wanted out but had trouble getting out. I have seen more of the community wanting those council members to stay in. So if there are, maybe the term limits was a way to get them out, but I, I have always seen more the opposite in our community, that we want the good council members and we want them to stay as long as possible. And the wealth of knowledge of coming in and hearing from those who have been here, and this is not a knock for those who've been here 20 years, it's so valuable to go, hey, when you guys handled this, you know, 10 years ago, what happened? That, that sort of thing you can't get if, if you're termed out in eight because things don't come around as often as we think. And so, and the, the other thing is with regards to being here longer, working with our bargaining units, I think that longevity of the relationship makes for a more collaborative relationship instead of, I'm in, I'm just pro-union, so this, or I'm in, I'm anti-union and it's that. No, we, we actually get to really work with each other, hear each other out, go through elections and that takes time. And, and so that, that historical part of it, I think is important. The other thing I see is because it's not a salary that can pay the bills, so it doesn't require the, the term limits to get people out because I'm sitting here because of a salary, you know, you're really volunteering. And so in other words, it takes people who really love the community to run and to serve in the current position because you're, you're getting a little stipend. Now, if it's, you know, 220,000, 170,000, then yeah, let's get them out because they, we don't know why they're in there. And so, but because our salary is so little, you know, we are, the current people who are serving and even those before weren't doing it because it was paying so much. And lastly, the authority is really spread out. It's never one of us. It's always at least three and many times it's five. And so because of that, you, I've seen that there's less dealing or hardly any dealing behind the scenes ever since I've been on the council. We don't make press conference before a meeting to go, oh, next week they're talking about term limits, I'm going to hold a press conference, I'm going to say I'm totally against it. The predecessors set that example and they never did that and we still don't do it to this day. And it's always just been, hey, what's going to happen tonight? And so it, it, there's a lot of respect for, for the traditions and the community and what we've done. And so, you know, tho, those are my reasons why I, I think we, we shouldn't go into it. And then with a smaller district, the term limit as in the election, now you can turn people over quick, easier. And so the community wants to get one of us out, it'll be easier because it's less votes. And so that will check itself. And so we don't need to actually put a term limit on the books for that. And so, but I too, i- if there's a way for the staff to help us gauge the community in the annual survey, if that's an extra question, Andy, that we can put in, I think, I, I think that's valuable if somehow we can address it where we can get something. I see the staff nodding, so.
Yeah, we, we can add via our community survey, a custom question and that would be scientifically sampled, so it would be validated. We also have tools internally, we can poll our residents. Wouldn't be scientific, but it could be a good measurement if that's the desire of council.
And it seems like all of us are in favor of that.
The city is not Knoxville. I lied. It was Bowling Green, Tennessee. Seventy-six thousand people on it. It's a platform, I think it's a Google platform called Jigsaw. And it's about, I'll send you the article, but it's just an interesting way, maybe there's a, and I think they talk about general plan, what kind of city do you want to be when you grew up? So it's just an online way to get, probably not scientifically valid data, but at least rapid response on some of these questions, which could be helpful in lots of things going forward. So, anyway, I'll send you the text, the article right now.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? I think, does that give you enough direction, Andy, Brianna?
Let's bring it, let's bring it back. Let me, let's take a look at it after we have districts and see what it looks like in a couple of years. I'll see what it looks like.
So I'm, I heard there's some interest in measuring community sentiment on this. We can report back on that when the survey is complete. And then at that time, council can provide direction on bringing it back at a certain time, whether it's for this cycle or for another election cycle.
Okay.
Is that a consensus on that?
Is that consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next we move to item eight. It is also to provide direction on potential transition of the city of Clovis to a charter city. And Stefan, this is our city clerk, Brianna Par.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In May 2024, council requested information on becoming a charter city. And in January of this year, staff gave an overview on the charter process and council has asked for future details on challenges, fiscal impact and legal updates. The following information will be presented, was presented at the January meeting, but I'll do a quick overview. A city charter is like a constitution. It can only be changed by voter approval. It grants more local control. And in California, we have 121 charter cities and about 365 general law cities. The process to become a charter city, the city council can draft the proposed charter, hold at least two public hearings to gather community input, place the proposed charter on a statewide general election ballot and a simple majority vote is required for adoption. The differences between general and city, general cities have the authority to act locally following the U.S. and California Constitution, state laws and regulations, where a charter city governs local municipal affairs under its charter, which cannot conflict with constitutions over statewide issues. For all other matters, general state laws still apply. The California Constitution home rule lets cities adopt charters and ordinances on municipal affairs within charter limits. Cities must follow federal and state laws on statewide issues. Charter cities can set different rules on municipal matters where general law cities must follow state laws. The California Constitution does not define municipal affairs, which traditionally covers local issues. Over time, this has narrowed as more matters are classified as statewide concerns, reducing charter city control over some local issues. Some potential challenges may include amending the charter, which would require voter approval. Charters require ongoing legal review to stay compliant and differing from state laws can lead to challenges from stakeholders and state agencies. Potential fiscal impact, if council wishes to move forward with a charter city, can be approximately a hundred thousand or more in the initial costs, which would include legal costs, community outreach and education and the cost of elections. Future expenses can be around the same or more depending on amendments, legal challenges or defending the charter. At this time, council, I'll turn this over to Gail from Lozano and Smith, who will follow up on legal and legislative updates.
Brianna, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So you have the same number for the cost of the election.
Yes.
So in the last presentation, the election itself is a hundred thousand. So this potentially would be on a-
It wouldn't be in addition, like it wouldn't be a hundred thousand for terms, a hundred thousands for, for charter, it would be all.
Right, but then there are the legal costs, that can't then also include the legal costs, the outreach, all of that. That would be added cost on top of the election cost, right?
Yes, it could be.
So that probably, I mean, that's not, the election itself is a hundred twenty-five.
Right.
All of us are on it, none of us are on it, six ballots, initiatives, whatever. But the legal cost to develop a charter would be additional to the election cost, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Thanks.
All right. Last time I joined you all, we talked about a number of these issues, but as a way to, to, to remind you, we talked a lot about land use and about SB nine and what that looked like it was. A number of charters had the ability to control housing density laws. When SB nine came around, there was challenges and as we know, we talked about the Redondo Beach case. And while there initially seemed to be some success from the court showing that charter cities could control their, their housing, the state came back and rewrote a statute to say that this became a statewide concern and removed that opportunity from charter cities and removed much of the housing controls that charter cities could have. Last times with city elections, we talked about how city elections could be and are a municipal affair, but they cannot violate federal law, including diluting the voter vote. So district elections, there was also a question last time regarding voter IDs and effective January 1st, the election code was updated to prohibit all general law and charter cities from requiring voters to present an ID even for local elections. So that is now statute. And then if we move on to this next piece, prevailing wage is an area where charter cities traditionally have seen-
Gail.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, can I ask a question on the voter ID one?
Sure.
Because I know Huntington Beach still has ongoing litigation for their voter ID and most recently, theirs was upheld and the state is appealing that. So how does that jive with that new law that took effect January 1st?
So what will happen is the courts will see if those two things are allowed. So it's going to end up in litigation is where that's going to end up going. We're, it's actually a nice segue into prevailing wage and sort of what happened there. So in prevailing wage, there's a, a famous case that the city of Vista won that upheld a charter- a charter city's right to control prevailing wage. That was against the State Building and Construction Trade Council. And that was in 2012. In 2013, the state put a new labor code in that said, if a charter city has, does not have, or, let me rephrase that, if a charter city has prevailing wage as part of their charter, they are not able to receive state funds. So they didn't say that prevailing wage is a statewide concern. What they said is, we're gonna tie that to city's ability to access state funds. That had not been challenged, except for a case that just came out in June of 2025. And the court looked at how a charter city would use prevailing wage for a local project. As we've talked about before, local projects that are used by local dollars had been considered a municipal affair. In this case that came out in June, several things happened. One is they were looking at a tax improvement district for tourism, and the court said that's not a municipal affair, because it's affecting more people than just your city. But what I thought was particularly interesting is, this case, which just was decided in June, was from a contract that happened in 2015. And so the City of Palm Springs has been in litigation since that time, dealing with this issue. And ultimately, the court said, we don't have to find on this issue, because the way the labor code is written, it was for those contracts post-2015. So that has not been decided. And it may be something like the voter ID laws, where cities continue to fight over what exactly does that mean in that piece. You could, under, what's allowable under labor code currently is for those public projects that are under twenty-five thousand dollars. A charter city could have prevailing wage be eliminated in those projects that are under that amount, so.
Under twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
This is what, like, two deaths and a...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not the expert on that, but it's an extremely low threshold. It's an extremely low threshold.
Can I follow up?
Sure, please.
When I read the packet, I understood it to say, if we're doing a, let's say we're doing a roadway project, and it's a million dollars, and we accept one penny of state funding for that, it has to be prevailing wage. But if it, if there's no outside funding, it could be exempt. Is that not the case?
That was initially what we thought, but as we started peeling back the onion and looking at this more, there was labor code that said, you can put this in your charter, it's allowable, but if you do so, you will receive no state dollars. Unless it's, I mean, there's a caveat in there, it has, I mean, you'll still get tax dollars, but you're not gonna get, for instance, Caltrans dollars for improvements. I think the trend, as you see with prevailing wage, and with voter ID, and with SB nine, is that charter cities have had charters that allow particular items to be issues of municipal affairs, and then the state comes in and either says explicitly that they're a matter of statewide concern, or redraft statutes so that, it makes it extremely difficult for a charter city to utilize those tools. The last one that is currently still an option is the ability to set higher fines for municipal code violations, rather than what is by state law. They still cannot be excessive, they still, there's still general provisions that provide some framework surrounding that. They cannot be unusually excessive. But that is an area where some charter cities have found some pieces that are available. So those are the legislative updates.
So with that, the direction needed for staff is to, A, remain a general law city, or proceed with a proposed charter, and we will look for direction from council.
Counsel, more best to you. I guess part of this is a legal question. What are the, what is the pro, are there any landmines out there if we decide to stay a general law city versus going, transitioning to a charter city, and vice versa? If we go to be a charter city, are there things out there that we're opening ourselves up for additional liability?
I think one of the things that is inherent in your question, and I want to make sure that I'm clear about, is there's not a one-size-fits-all when it comes to drafting a charter. So if you review charters, there are some that are very simple and are sort of one-issue charters. They may have drafted their charter to say, we believe that municipal fines are a local municipal affair, and our charter gives us the ability to act differently. Everything else that's not included in this charter, we will act as we have previously or in accordance with a general law city. There are also charters that are very expansive and include lots of items in their charter that some cities may have had as an ordinance. Either way, when you have that charter, first, I should say, if you don't have something in a charter, those items are a general law city, and so there wouldn't be a challenge surrounding that. So for instance, using the voter ID example, if that was not included in the charter, you would be operating as a general law city as regard to that piece. If it's included within your charter, then, and you operate it as such, either the secretary, the secretary general, or a group of concerned citizens or other stakeholders could then sue the city to see that that's not legal. And so then the legal challenge would come from that. So in your questions about pros and cons, having a charter allows for municipal control of certain issues, but it also then would open up other cities, or, I mean, other stakeholders to then review that and challenge that legally. Also, as the council, if you chose to have other initiatives added to the charter, so for instance, there's a new area of the law that would be great to have be as part of the charter, it would go through the same process of needing to have public input and feedback, public meetings before it then went on the election to be voted on, to be added, and the same to be removed. So if the council decides that they want a very expansive charter, and includes a bunch of items, and later decides, we'd like to remove some of those charters, that also would then need to go to a vote. I don't know that that answered your question, but I wanted to make sure that, it's hard to understand what pitfalls may be, other than the legal challenge of the charter.
One of the things I ask my colleagues is the juice worth the squeeze. I guess, if I understand what you're saying, as a general law city, we make our rules as a council, and we move on. As a charter, we put those things in the charter. If we make an expansive charter, something larger, unless you know of a model city that we would want to go after, anytime we want to change it or remove things, we have to take it to the vote of the people. Is that, would that be accurate?
That's, that's, that's pretty accurate. I would still say as a general law city, you're still subject to the rules of the state.
Right.
And so for some, I think charter cities have allowed them to carve out those items that they deem to be municipal affairs, and to be, allow those to be controlled. But increasingly, those items are being reduced dramatically. So what was allowable under law ten years ago is radically different than what's included today.
It sounds like the only thing that we have control over would be municipal fines. If we go to a charter, everything else, the state can take us away.
There are, you could include those other things in the charter, but they are open to challenge, and they are open to other consequences, is what I would say.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I guess my only question was, what, if there was one positive here, what would it be?
Well, I do think the municipal fines is a positive. I mean, that would allow, and there are some charter cities who do municipal, use municipal fines to be able to go above the state limits, and use that as a tool within their communities. That would be a decision the council would need to weigh as to the pro and con of doing it.
If we were to guesstimate how much it would cost to switch over to a charter city, I know they talked about legal fees and different things, how much we'll be guesstimating a cost could be to do such a thing?
I'm gonna defer that question to...
Everyone's looking at me, so.
It's a lot, apparently, Andy.
Andy, you're good.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're...
We accounted that the, there are some election costs, some legal costs, and that was coming in that hundred to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range. The expansiveness of the charter would highly drive that, but we still have to go through that process, outreach, public noticing, all those things, plus play the county clerk to run the election. So that's where we got that hundred to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar number. Depends on what else is on the ballot. There's a lot of variability with the cost of an election, based on how big the ballot is. So these are definitely, at this point, estimates.
Go ahead, Diane.
Has there ever been a charter city that utilized a piece of their charter to sue the state over whether it was a change in the code, or even a new law, that kind of usurped their charter ability? And has there been any of that, and what were the outcomes?
I think that's a fair question. I'm not sure who initiated the Redondo Beach and Huntington Beach challenges. Those are both two cities that are pretty active charter cities in litigation with the state. As to who initiated that lawsuit, I'm not clear. Or, and if a charter city did so to say, we know that this is going to invite a challenge, but we're okay with it, they may not have been the ones to file paperwork, but may have done so, understanding that it was going to be legally challenged.
And has the state ever lost?
The state lost. So when you look at SB nine, the state initially lost in that case. What they did is took what the judge said, and then redrafted the statute to make it a statewide concern, and addressed the issues that the judge said. On why it was a municipal issue, they rewrote it to be that way. And as you saw with prevailing wage, did something very similar. And while they didn't explicitly say, this is a matter of statewide concern, what they did is tie charter cities' ability to receive funding to this piece.
And then what about the initiative process? I know that's separate from what charter cities can do, because it applies to everyone, but for example, there's a push right now to get voter ID on the ballot as an initiative. Are there certain things like that, and how would that affect some of the workarounds the state has done to take over the municipal affairs of statewide concerns, for those charter cities to push back on that similarly?
I understand your question, but it's rather nuanced, because it hits on a number of different pieces. So a charter can control their election. So how a recall process, or initiative, or any of those items happen, could be part of a charter. But again, it's still subject to statewide law. So that's one thing that I'd want to look a whole lot more at, as initiative, let me clarify your question. Are you asking, can an initiative be brought by community members to amend the charter?
No, I was thinking more about pushing back on the state taking over municipal affairs of statewide concerns. Is there a way to, I mean, I guess, something other than just suing over a law? I mean, for example, the voter ID, and obviously that's in litigation, but Huntington Beach had put a charter amendment before their voters, their voters passed that, so they were going to operate that way with their municipal elections. I believe it was the case where the state said, no, you're not. They got into litigation over that, and now it's being appealed. And in, after that lawsuit began, is when the state came up with the law to say, okay, now nobody else try this, essentially, we don't want you doing this. So is there a way for charter cities to, maybe they don't have that yet, but they wanted to go that way, to push back on those laws from the state that are saying, no, this is now a statewide concern? Or like, I mean, could they do that on SB nine, saying, we understand that you found a workaround, and you tried to write this code, or you came up with a law to take this away from us, but we think that's not legal? I mean, how can charter cities kind of clawback some of their municipal affairs and their control against a state that is basically trying to say, don't even bother, because there's no point?
A couple things in that. First, citizens can always do a statewide initiative. So, and you've seen that with the voter ID process, and that's something, because that is a statewide concern, and so that initiative could be statewide. As far as locally, and what charter cities could do, so let's say that a charter city did not include voter ID originally in their charter, they could now amend that, put it on the ballot, and then be subject to a legal challenge, or wait for the attorney general to file suit to have that conversation be had in the courts. They could also, I suppose, add themselves as to other cases that are outgoing, or that are currently ongoing. As far as pushback against the state, I think that what you, a charter would want to do is declare in their charter that those things are of municipal concern. And that's how they would then want to defend that charter. I feel like I'm not answering your question, but part of it is, like with SB nine, for instance, it very clearly says it's a matter of statewide concern. It's been, in the courts have held, it would be a matter of municipal concerns if it did X, Y, and Z, since it doesn't say that it's a statewide concern. But because the state said it's a statewide concern, it now is a statewide concern, and that closes that analysis.
I guess that was my question, is like, who, who is the ultimate determiner of a statewide concern? Does Gavin Newsom just get to say, statewide concern, and we all have to...
So there's both implied and direct statewide concern. So when things end up in court, they're implied, and that's how the housing piece ended up, is because most charter cities said, wait a minute, housing is a municipal affair, that is of a local concern. And the state said, no, that what happens in your city and with your housing affects your neighbors, and it is a matter of statewide concern. And so it went to court. It is, whenever something says it's a matter of statewide concern, and the legislature deems it to be, it is so.
When it's stated specifically in the statute, the court's gonna interpret that as a matter of statewide concern, issue done.
Almost every statute that I review has that language in it.
When it, when it has been silent over the years, when the state legislature, decades ago, it wasn't an issue, they would just pass a law, some charter cities would challenge those things and say, hey, this is our concern, not your concern. And so, as Gail has said, over the years, the state legislature has now begun putting at the bottom of the bill, or whatever it is, this is a matter of statewide concern. Done. So that's been the issue. I think, if I could, just real quick, I think Mr. Prandini had raised a point, I don't know if he wanted me to answer.
Sure.
A lot of these charters that we're talking about, only about a quarter of the cities in the state are charter cities. Very few of them have become charter cities over the last decade or twenty years. The vast majority of charter cities were charter cities from their inception, decades ago, covering a lot of topics that have been eroded away over the years with state legislation and court decisions. So I'm not aware, in our research, of any cities recently, or a big rush in cities recently going to charter cities, covering very many topics at all. So it's just not, it's not something that's been a big push from cities to go to charter cities, but, I mean, it's something that's out there. I will also add, there is a third option. You can put on the ballot to create a charter committee, where actual voters decide whether or not they want to form a charter committee to evaluate whether or not a charter city is something. So it is a third option.
Any other questions of staff at the time? My question is, we will be general law, we are general law, but if we are a charter city, whatever is not in the charter, and/or whatever the state has already deemed, we will be most ready for local control if we are a charter city. Should the state ever shift the other way and say, this is not a public matter anymore, this is not a public matter? Is that correct? Will we have more local control as a charter city than as a general law city?
I want to clarify, make sure I'm understanding your question. So is the thought that at some point, the state legislature would remove the pieces in statute that said, subject to statewide concern?
Yeah, so if, you know, if the will of the legislature ever shifts to where, hey, we're not gonna handle all these things anymore, you know, this is a matter of the cities, are we in a better position if we are already a charter city, or it's still the same? Because general law, you can still enact ordinances that are more, that address the issues? That address the issues, especially these ones that you listed: land use, voter ID, city elections.
I suppose that if the state legislature reversed course and only... And removed charter cities from statutes, then the charter cities would have the ability to govern in those areas. But everything that we've seen is an increase in their wanting to have things be a matter of statewide concern, rather than to say, "We believe in local governance."
But if it shifts back, are we in a better position as the charter city or no? City of Clovis, you would be... If you were not charter or if you were charter, you would be the same.
I guess it's a hard question, because let's... We'll use SB 9 as an example. If they were to remove some of the provisions of SB 9, I guess the... Is your question assuming then that it would only... They would only roll back those provisions as they relate to charter cities or for all cities?
If it's no longer a state concern, they can still write the law.
Absolutely.
They can still have whatever restrictions, but then would the charter cities be exempt from following it? Because now it's no longer a statewide concern. So whether it's elections, whether it's... Right now, fees is the one party we have the most control over. And so does that give us... All I'm looking for is what gives us the most control? The state's going to go where it's going to go, but whatever gives us the most control, we should be that and be ready whenever we can grab that control back.
I think part of what we tried to show here is that control is also balanced against other considerations and costs. So the legal challenges that come with that and that piece. I suppose if there was an indication that the state was going to reverse course on their view of charter cities, then it would make sense to become a charter city at that point, because there would not be the hindrance of the legal challenges that could exist with having a charter. I'm not sure that that gets to your issue. I'm just... I'm not sure how to address something the state may do.
Mayor, if I could, just real quick, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as understanding. So just because you're a charter city, you have to have that topic covered in your charter. You can't just be a charter city for prevailing wage or municipal fines, and then let's say the state shifts on land use or housing issues and then say, "Well, we get it." You never addressed those issues in your charter, so you would have to go back to the voters to add that item as an amendment to the charter. Just like if you were a general law city today and the state shifts course, you could go to the voters at that time with a new charter or a charter to begin with and go. So I'm not sure... I mean, I guess presumably it might be easier... I'm just thinking out loud. It might be easier if you were a charter city for some topics to potentially go to the voters for an amendment if the state relinquished some control on a topic. But you've got to go back to the voters either way if you haven't addressed it in your charter already.
And if it is currently addressed and the state pushes a law that is... That contradicts what our charters, we have to by law amend the charter. Or can we keep it and just follow the state? And not enforce it and follow the state?
It's a good question. I think we just don't enforce it. I don't think it's unadvisable.
We can write something where we're ready all the time, and so that's where I'm getting at, where, okay, let's write the voting laws how we want it. Let's write fines and elections how we want it, but we know we will follow the state. We're not challenging because they override, they deem it a statewide issue. So I'm looking at it that way. So does that make sense or is that too much work for what it's worth?
I mean, it depends on... Well, that's a question that you all would have to answer, because then you'd have to decide what you want to have in your charter and that piece.
I feel like you'd have to write the charter that would include every possible law ever coming our way that has worried us or that will worry us. Otherwise, it's not in there. And if every time you want to amend... Let's say we see... Let's say we do all that, and we spend a half million dollars, because that's a whole bunch of laws that we would put in a charter. And then we see something else coming, but it's not in there. You have to go to the voters, and they have to vote to put it in your charter. So I just... I can't... I can't imagine...
I was going to say, there is a case that I think could be relevant. We talked about it last time, but it bears repeating. Huntington Beach, as a provision of their charter, included protection of local parks and beachfronts. And as a part of that provision, they said, "Any constructions in parks over a certain amount required a vote of the people." And they did that because in Huntington Beach, that's a pretty important area. They wanted to preserve parks and make sure that they were not constructed or changed. Then Verizon came and wanted to put a cell tower in the park. Council thought, "That's a great idea. We're going to make some money off of the revenue and construction of that cellphone tower." It was a time when we needed more cellphone towers, so it seemed to be of a public good. And they began processing that. However, the... While the lease was held to be legal, the construction wasn't, because the way the charter was written is that it had to then go back to the vote of the people. And so what was a well-intended provision of the charter then required court costs and delays until the next time that that could go out to the vote of the people, which delayed the contract that Huntington Beach had with Verizon. And so, again, great intention, but then provided some unintended consequences that delayed the governance that council wanted to provide.
I guess it just seems like... I mean, I think the concept is right if it was 1912. But it's not 1912. I can't... I just can't imagine that the... I feel like this is a perpetual Losano Smith annuity fund. I mean, the legal cost of this... Huntington Beach sues everyone for everything all the time. And sometimes, maybe, I don't know if they win or not, but I just... I can't in good conscience imagine a charter that would get us ready for any possible thing that could happen would be a half million dollar legal fee. I made that up, but I made that up. Let's just say it's a half million dollars. I just can't imagine the return on that, because people write like it's more flexible. Actually, no, it's less flexible. The housing piece, I think, had appeal to us, but it doesn't have appeal anymore. Our land use, I think, was our biggest concern. We don't... You know, they mean prevailing wage is a thing, but you're going to pay prevailing wage if you do a measure C project or a state contract. So I just... I understand in principle if it was 1912. I just can't see a way... We cannot protect ourselves in every part of a charter for something we can't imagine. And the one thing we wish we'd protected ourselves for, we forgot to put in, and then we're not protected anyway. So I just... I can't see the... I think the legal cost of the city would be outrageous over the next decade. We would sue them for everything and never win. And I doesn't feel like a taxpayer would be happy that we have that kind of legal... That's just me.
Well, I'm not asking us to protect everything. I'm asking us to protect what is valuable to the city of Clovis. And that may be certain land uses. That may be even some parks and trails. But whatever it is, so that way it is preserved. Can the legislature override it? I think they can, but at least we have it down where the citizens of Clovis value this. We value this type of development, brown schools, whatever it is. And so that way, it can always be protected. So I'm not imagining everything that can protect ourselves, but this is what we like. This is what we think Clovis is. And if and when the authority is given back, we're all... We have it already. So that's what I'm imagining. My other question then relates to the litigation that we all don't want to get into, but you... You, meaning a city, cannot sue if it does not already have... If it is not a charter city that has something protected. Is that correct? So a general law city, they put a new long in, can we still sue, but we don't have any standing? Or now that we have a provision already, then we can sue? That we're thinking they're taking away our local control?
I'm going to defer to Scott regarding standing. I think you can still.
Yeah, that's basically it. I mean, you'd have to have standing, something that we call standing to challenge. And if we're a general law city, then there'd be no reason to sue over a charter issue. By the same token, again, as we talked about, you have to have that specific topic covered in your charter in order to have legal standing to sue the state over that issue.
Mayor, if I can add?
Yes.
On the charter having... Let's just use land use, for example, and say our charter includes limitations on land use, and that goes to the voters, and the voters say, "Yes to that. We'd like to keep Clovis Clovis." And then the state says that we cannot do that, and we lose that lawsuit. That could be very confusing for our residents as to why they passed a charter to protect our land use, but then we weren't able to actually effectuate that language. So I am a little concerned about the communication and the expectations that the charter may set if it does go to the voters that we would then be under if we couldn't actually implement the charter. So just something from my perspective, getting the phone calls and managing expectations in our community.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Bessemer?
You know, the area... And this is probably the only one, that if we were a charter city and we put something in the charter to protect parks and trails, because I foresee sometime in the future, a law coming out of Sacramento saying, "City Clovis, you need to get rid of these parks and make those affordable housing projects." I foresee them telling us, "Yeah, you're going to have to tear that, buy it, tear it down. You're going to... That park you don't need anymore. That needs to go over there." And we would have to do it unless, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's in our charter. They could still write a law to try to do that, but then we'd have standing to say, "No, we... In our charter, we're protecting our parks and our trails in our neighborhoods." It's unfortunate that we have to take preemptive steps or think about preemptive steps to protect us from the state, but I think that's kind of where we are in some of these things.
Okay. This time, we're going to go ahead and open the public portion. I wanted to note for the record, we do have one item in our email from Ms. Molly Anala, and so in support of the charter city. And so we have it here. All of us have it.
Brian Wilson, 469 Bergen. I've been a big proponent about charter cities for a long time. Clovis let us slip out about 25 years ago when they were trying to... When this kind of came up a long time ago. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I just... All the studying I have done on this, and I've talked to Redondo Beach, I've talked to all these folks, no city has left being a charter, because you can leave being a charter to it anytime you want. Nobody has left it. There are some that have not passed it, and that's kind of what it sounds like here. I think it should go up to a vote of the people. You're talking about doing a thing online or whatever. That needs to be something I think the city, for this type of operation, should spend the money and do a vote. It gets through or it doesn't go through. With the facts, people understanding where the process is, I think, would do the citizenry a big attaboy. The other thing is, is that there is a coalition developing of charter cities with exactly what the mayor was saying, is how do you deal with this? Well, one person has one thing on there, but you have a coalition set up, and that's forming with some of the cities down in Redondo Beach and Huntington Beach. They're kind of moving that direction, and the more cities have become a charter, the more power that becomes. It's kind of like a NATO program. So I would say, go for the vote. Whether you do it yourselves, I'm not sure that that's something you need to do, but definitely send it to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi there. Nikki Steller, 2620 Sample Avenue. I originally came to this meeting wanting to support the charter city. However, based on the conversation all of you had, the charter city, in principle, I would support what you're doing. I strongly support local control. Okay? And if we were dealing with honorable people up in Sacramento, this would be an awesome thing. Now, I was looking at your thing, and you're saying, "Following the federal and the U.S. Constitution." Something that the legislatures up in Sacramento seem to... They're very selective on what parts of the Constitution that they support. For instance, there's one part that says, "Shall not be infringed," and for some reason, they don't understand that. You're playing... From a war point, you're playing defense. And you don't win wars by playing defense. You win wars by mounting counter... Getting on a counteroffensive and going on the attack. Clovis itself, we're not going to have the resources to go after Sacramento. If we could get cities together and then reach out to our elected officials, I'm sure that there's some federal bill, like when I'm going to be talking with Senator Mike Lee, that I could say, "Hey, we could put some amendment onto it." Like, I'm thinking the 50-state carry bill. It's going to be filibustered anyway, and I've got some poison pills. I'm going to float to him. I already talked to him. And I'm sure that many of your problems, or I should say, our problems, will be... Are spread across the country, because what's happening in Sacramento is happening in every blue state. They are destroying our republic, our limited government, and trying to replace it with basically centralized control. And if you kiss... If you're in along with those in control, great. If not, they're going to stomp on us. I appreciate your efforts. I could go either way. I could go either way. If nothing else, the charter city, it might be a finger waved, but, you know, if nothing else, be defiant. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Anyone else to address the council?
Mike Prandini, again. 2062 Alamo's, Clovis. I agree with Lynn. There's no way you can create a charter that'll defend you against litigation, that'll defend you against state actions. And although Drew has a good point regarding land use changes and forced usage of land, there are other mechanisms within the state government that would prohibit the conversion of parks and open space to residential use. They already exist. You can't... You've got to have a minimum... Not a minimum, but you have to provide for open space and park space. Otherwise, you're open to litigation. And I just can't see the state coming down and saying, "Okay, you've got to take the park on Sunnyside and turn that into a high-rise, multifamily, low-income project." That just... I just don't see that happening. But, you know, who knows? Stranger things have happened. But I agree with that there's no way you can protect yourself against that, because exactly what the attorneys just told you. If you... If the state has... Wants to do that kind of thing, believe me, they will put in there, "This is a statewide concern, and you shall do it." And if you don't, as they did on that one proposition, if you've got this in your code, you don't get any state money. And that would be devastating to the city of Clovis, because you guys get a lot of transportation dollars from the state. Gas tax dollars, transportation dollars, sales tax dollars. So you would be shooting yourself in the foot by putting something in your charter that would be against a state... The state interests, because as with the state, and the cities complain to the state because of what the state's doing to the cities. The states complain to the feds because of what the feds are doing to the states. So it all starts up there and flows downhill, and you guys on the receiving end of most of it. So I really don't... I agree with Lynn. There's just no way you could do that, and a charter's not going to help you. I just don't see that. So I would recommend against moving forward with this. Number one, it's costly. Even with a minor change, you've got to put it before the voters. And the thing is, with the ballot, it's not just a question on the ballot. It's got to be in the ballot. The whole thing, whatever, how many pages it is, that's got to be on the ballot. It can't just be out there a single line, "Do you approve this charter?" The whole thing's got to be in there, and that's what makes it expensive. So I could see that number of $125,000. If you had a 20-page charter, all 20 pages would be in there, and that'd be... Most of the cost of the election would be those 20 pages. So you'd probably be paying a lot more for the election to get... And if you made a mistake and decided, "No..." a mistake and decided, "No, that's not a good idea," you gotta go back to the voters and change it. Look what Fresno's always doing, and the county's always doing, but they, but they have, because they're charters, every time they make a change in that charter, they gotta go back to the voters, and it costs them money. Because they didn't, these charters, as was indicated, these were made, some of these charters were made decades ago, even a century ago. So, it, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, at one time, it was an advantage, but over the years, it's been eroded, and there's really no, as far as I can tell from the discussion from the attorneys, that, that there's so many cons against it, that, in, in addition to the cost, litigation, and all the other stuff that goes along with it, it, it just doesn't seem to make any sense, so I would recommend not doing it.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else like to address the council on this item? Okay, see now, we're gonna go ahead and close the public portion and bring it back to the council, and see what the pleasure of the council is.
I, I, I wish it made more sense, I wish there was a way, I just don't see it. And, um, Mr. Miller? No, yes.
Wilson.
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 I got your attention. I got your name right, Mr. Wilson. Your point about people weighing in on it, I think what's, I think that's an interesting idea, but I don't think the average voter, if you said, "Do you think Clovis should be a charter city?", they'd go, huh? So, I, but I do think if there would be a way to have a town hall with the mayor, or some conversation with people that wanna talk about it, because I, it's a big question, for sure. So, I don't think it's urgent today, but I do think if there's a way to weigh in, but the, the average person can't, a poll of yes, no, would be of not any interest at the moment, right? So, I think it's a conversation we can have as a community. I don't see a way forward today. I wish it were different. I wish we could control our own destiny through this strategy, but I just, I don't, I don't see how, the three things that you can control are of not that much interest to us, and I, I just think it's a perpetual litigation fund for the rest of the city's existence, and I think it's just, I don't think that's a wise, uh, the things we're trying to protect ourselves against don't exist anymore, so I, I would not be in favor of this at the moment, but more conversation with our community, I think, is a good thing.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah.
I definitely think community input, kind of as you described, because the idea of educating people on what it is, what the current state of the situation is with charter cities versus the state, um, I think that's all important things for the public and the community to have an opportunity to understand and weigh in on. I also really agree with the mayor's point, and I was sort of trying to get there in some of my questions early on, with the idea of being prepared, should there ever be the opportunity for cities to exercise local control again in the future. And while I agree, you can't create a charter that covers absolutely everything, I do think there are certain things that are part of the character of Clovis, that Clovis way of life, some of those things that we already know from a lot of the outreach we've done on various topics, what's important to our people, and to have a charter that expresses that, whether it is immediately enforceable or not, I think that's just a way to really communicate to the people that, "Hey, we get it, we hear you, we value the same things, and hopefully someday we'll have a different composition in Sacramento, a different, um, you know, makeup in the governor's office, and maybe we'll actually able, be able to be Clovis again, instead of just another city in California." So, I definitely am in favor of some version of moving forward, whether it is only in conversation right now, um, but if there was agreement from my colleagues, I would certainly also be in favor of making sure that we aren't afraid of what the state has already done to local control, we see it, we don't like it, we push back on it at every opportunity, and, and we're, we're not afraid of what may or may not happen in the future either. We're going to say, "This is Clovis, this is who we are, you elected us to reflect your values, and make sure that every tool we have available is something that we pursue to continue to protect those things that are of value to us." I'm, I'm, I'm fine with doing that, too, so I'm kinda open to where my other colleagues are on it, but I definitely think that being a charter city would have been great if we had done it at incorporation, like a lot of these cities did, um, but I definitely see value to at least letting Sacramento know, but also, the people in Clovis know that local control is so important to us, that we would move forward and give ourselves every opportunity to protect that and exercise that if and when that was ever an opportunity for us.
Go ahead, Matt.
I, I would love to say that, yeah, we could be a charter city, and all this is gonna work, and all that kinda stuff, but this is a lot of, you know, we're talking about spending a lot of money, doing a lot of things, just to say, "Screw you Sacramento" type of thing. So, um, if there were more positives that came out of this, like, last time we talked about this with the housing laws and the things that we could, we could control and do, you know, the whole idea of the local control aspect of things, that would be great, but now we're talking about putting ourselves in a position for litigation, putting ourselves in a position of no funding from the state. I mean, I think once you jump out there and you start putting this type of documentation forward and saying, "Hey, we're a charter city, because just in case you decide that we can do this, we're gonna put all this stuff into a, a, a form, so that we'll be protected at that time." I just don't know that that, to me, makes sense. I would love to be able to say, "Yes, we could go forward as being a charter city," but, um, I don't, I just don't see the positive. I don't see anything positive that came out of this conversation that's gonna help the city of Clovis. What I see is that if we do make these moves, it's gonna cost us more money. I'm not opposed to having a, a community conversation about it, you know, but I, what I worry about is the community conversation being just an opinion. So, I go to this community conversation and only give my opinion. It's not the facts that we heard tonight of what it really is, um, you know, that you don't really get any benefit by doing it, other than municipal code action, um, at this time. So, while I'm, I'm, I'm good for the community being involved and being part of the process, I just, you know, how do we make sure they get the facts that are associated with that as well?
We invite our attorney for it.
You're fun, you're talking about it.
For free.
Go ahead, Drew.
You know, I'm, I'm glad we had this conversation, because there tends to be a lot of misinformation and disinformation about what charter cities are and what they're not. I think, to Diane's point, if we had done this in 1912, we'd be in a different position, but in, but today, we would, you know, the, when things, if and when things, the winds of change occur in Sacramento, I think we revisit this, uh, but until then, the juice isn't worth the squeeze.
Well, I, I'm a, I'm a dreamer, so.
Me, too.
I, I may, you, this is an opportunity for us to leave, after we leave this council, a set of rules in which this community says, "This is where Clovis is, this is what Clovis stands for." I know that the practicality of it is that, okay, maybe just be awash, but I really think this community wants to hold its identity, how its land use, what it wants, because I think we look at it and we think of, we think of challenging them. No, I think of it as identifying us, and whoever's up there, they may go the opposite way, and, and we don't like it. This, this at least identifies us and says, "This is the character, the image, and the, the Clovis that we want, and we're gonna put it in our charter, and it's gonna be there, and some things may not be in effect, but at least it's something that the community went through the exercise and said, 'Yeah, that, that is us, we, we will be that, and when we can exercise it, we will always stand with that.'" That's why I think it's, it's even worth the dollars that we'll be involved in and creating it, and so that, I, I just like that much more than someone keep telling us what we should be, and yes, we, we're, we're good stewards of the laws that come down to us. I think we've seen it in police, fire, planning, we always see those, those updates, and so we're good at that, too, so.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
Mayor, I think the other part of that, right in line with what you're talking about, is that opportunity to be prepared if that day one of local control ever returns, but I think there's also that, that sense of the, the conversation and kind of the pall over it is Sacramento's taken it all away, and they've eroded all this local control, and, I mean, look at what we've already lost since the, you know, previous discussion about this, it's just not worth it. But I also feel like it's that kind of mentality is why Sacramento keeps getting away with stripping us of everything that's mattered to us, and this could be an opportunity, as the mayor said, not just to say, "This is who Clovis is, this is our identity, this is who we are," but also to maybe have that opportunity to join with other charter cities that feel the same way, and find ways to affect some of that pushback, and maybe, you know, be a little bit of the beginning of the changing of the winds in Sacramento to remind them that we actually care about our own cities and our own communities, we understand them better than they ever possibly could. The one-size-fits-all out of Sacramento is garbage, and it's never worked, and it's working less and less as we go forward, so can't we add Clovis to the mix of voices that would be part of that conversation? So, I, I think that's another positive to it.
What I was gonna say is, can't you do that without being a charter city?
No.
Maybe, maybe that's.
Why is it a no? Why can't?
Because that's the argument of the charter cities.
Why can't we identify who we are? Why does it have to be a legal change of, "We're gonna be a charter city now to say all these things and do all this stuff, just in case Sacramento comes at us?" I mean, we can identify who we are at any time, we do identify who we are on a regular basis, by the way we vote and the things we do. So, I mean, I, I feel like we're just, we're trying to force ourselves to say, um, "This is who we are," when we know who we are, and we could put this down in any kinda document we want. It doesn't have to be a charter city to say, "This is Clovis, and this is who we are." We could do our own, you know, proclamations that we involve all the community and put this forward and say, "If things were to change in Sacramento, then that day we'll change these laws, and we're gonna go forward and make these changes." But what I worry about is being, getting sucked into a hole that says, "Now we have a charter city that locks us into saying these things, that we could be, you know, just by having it, we could be susceptible to lawsuits," and we all know how those go. So, I agree with you, I am not a fan of the things that happen in Sacramento, but I'm just wondering if there's another way to do this, other than say, "I appreciate the points and everything that we wanna say, we are Clovis, this is who we are, this is how we identify," but the facts don't stand with us to change to be a charter city at this time. So, is there a way for us to identify ourselves in what we wanna accomplish outside of saying, "We're a charter city"? That's, that's just my thought on that.
That's a excellent question. Okay, I don't know if you got your direction, oh, Lynn, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I'd like to just, I think, the summary, 3-2, interesting conversation, good education, I don't think there's consensus to move forward today, but I, it doesn't have, it's not, it's not a today question. And I guess I would also say, like everything on earth right now, it's probably not either-or, general law or charter, there may be something we don't even, we can't even imagine right now, but we could create for ourselves. I mean, there are parts of the country that have regional governments, for example, so maybe our region is so special that we need something for ourselves. I'm not sure, but there's other ways to get at it, but we're trying to solve, it has to be this or that, I'm gonna say maybe it's something else. But I think at the moment, I think education, engaging our community, people that care about it and wanna talk to us about it, talk about it. Let's, let's get some education out there before we move forward, but I was just gonna offer that I think it's a 3-2, hold on, um, important conversation, let's keep talking, but I don't think you have consensus to move forward. I was just gonna try to move the conversation along for you.
And are you looking for a motion, so even if it's a 3-2, one way or the other, we're moving forward?
You want a motion.
I think Andy's looking for a motion, so he knows which way.
Yeah, a clarification would be helpful, I think, for the community.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, what's the verb? Uh, that we continue the conversation about transition, but we don't take action on it today.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? Aldous in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
Nay. Okay, the motion passes 3 to 2. Now we will move to item nine. Okay, discuss and provide direction regarding city council protocols, and for the hat-trick today, Brianna Par, our city clerk, presenting.
All right, council, this is your last item for the evening, and at the April 14th council meeting, council agreed to revisit the city council protocols that were last updated November 6, 2023, which guides the city council's operations and roles and responsibilities. Staff is seeking council direction and a motion of amendments if requested, and that is the end of my presentation.
Okay, for, for this one, we will go ahead and open up the public portion first, so we can hear feedback from, and then the council can discuss changes and/or deletions or additions to our current protocols. I wanna note for the record that we do have one comment on this item, and it is from Rachel Udoman, and so she has made some suggestions to the council, and every one of us has her email, uh, in front of us.
I also had that letter, we got it at the end of last meeting from Linda Abear, on the same topic.
Okay, yes, and so last week.
We didn't get to.
There was something in the packet as well.
And I got it again.
Okay.
Actually, me, too.
So, this time we're gonna go ahead and open up the public portion first, so that way you can give us feedback with regards to any council protocols, suggestions, comments.
Mike Prandini again, 2062 Alamo's Clovis. The issue of protocols, I mean, I've got an idea in my head, what I think, what, what I think you're gonna be talking about, or what you're gonna be doing, is, I guess maybe I need to ask you a question, is, I, I did not download, was there a staff report on this, in terms of what your protocols are?
Yes.
Was that part of the packet?
Yes, it's part of the packet.
Okay, I, I wasn't able to download the packet, I saw the agenda too late to, to download it. But in maybe half a dozen words, could you explain to me exactly what you guys are gonna be talking about? I presume it's, let me tell you what I presume, it's how you deal with each other, how you deal with the staff, and how you deal with the public as the city council.
Yes, that, that, we have in our here, Rosa the mayor, communication with staff, using of the logo, letterhead, and so we have that, agenda preparation, how we do.
Okay, okay, that, that, that's, that's what I figured you guys were gonna talk about, so, I, since I haven't reviewed what's there, and all I know is what past councils have done, it seems to have worked pretty well, what you have on the books now, even though I'm, I don't know who wrote them up, I've, I've never seen them. I worked for the city 33 years, and I never saw a list of protocols.
We, we never had them until two years ago.
Okay.
That's why you never saw them.
That's why I never saw them, yeah, okay. But I will go home and download it and read them.
We'll have a test for you, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, uh, but, so, with that, I just wanted to clarify exactly if it, what you guys were gonna talk about, is what I thought, and with that, I'm gonna go home for the evening and relax, and let you guys discuss and come to a conclusion as to what you wanna change, or what you wanna add, or whatever.
Yeah.
And, good night. Thank you very much for accepting my recommendations and comments, so, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mike, for coming in tonight.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, Jenny.
Hi, okay, me again. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry about that. So, I do know that Rachel, uh, she did, because I got an email, too, from her, and that one of her concerns had to do with how council members identify themselves on social media, and that includes using one's title in Facebook postings, for example, and, because it makes it look like it's an official posting, even though it says up at the top, if you scroll up and such, that it's, it's, uh, the member's, uh, opinion. But I will say that even following posts by the President of the United States, um, there are some that come out of the White House as official, and, and the titles used, but the ones that come out on Truth Social, "It's the real Donald Trump," you know, he doesn't say, say anything more in his, you know, his title, so thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Is that right on his Truth Social, it doesn't say President of the United States, just says Donald Trump?
Most of them just start with, you know, yeah.
Okay.
It's interesting.
Hello, my name is Steve Trevino, I live in Bullard. You know, one question I get a lot from a lot of people is, "What does this close city council do?" I get that. I get that question a lot. What do these guys do? I said, you, and, well, I don't know. I said, I, from what I understand, they go to the meetings on Mondays, from what I understand. And, uh, and I've seen them on, uh, on, on Thanksgiving, they go to the old folks', uh, place over here and volunteer to serve the food. And, and then, uh, whenever a business opens, they go to the business and they present, they cut a ribbon, and basically that's what they do. Now, I'm just giving my opinion. I don't know, I don't know goes behind the scenes, okay? But I told them that's, that's my understanding of what they do. So, uh, I, I think that, uh, you guys need to do a better job of, of telling people what, what you do.
I love that.
So anyways, thank you.
That's how we don't get paid too much. Steve, there's meals, there's meals in two of those three scenarios, that's one of the reasons. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close that and bring it back to the council and what we wanted to change and/or add, or just keep as is. Any suggestions, comments? Go ahead, Drew.
I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, the portion where it says proclamations presented by a council member. Is there a scenario, and, and maybe it's here and I'm not picking it out completely, if, if I wanted to do a proclamation presented by me without everybody else signing off on it? And let's say it is something that Matt totally is against. How do we, how do we keep ourselves from him doing an anti-Drew proclamation to what I just said? Uh, it, and, and this is a worst-case scenario situation, um, but we've seen it, we've seen it in other jurisdictions, where you have two council members that are philosophically opposed, and they go after each other writing proclamations or, you know, I'm just trying to avoid that. Is there, is, if, if I decided I wanna do a proclamation, who do I, do I go through the city manager for that? Is that how, how that works?
Drew, currently, you're talking about B, right?
Right, I am.
So th- those are done without, those are non-public. It can still be public in that you brought it to that organization.
Right.
But it doesn't require the consensus of the council, and it's not a part of the record of the city council.
Are there any?
And so can scenarios of what you just said exist potentially? Cause Matt can still request one that is anti, like you said.
Right.
But i- it's not, it's not city.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's really kinda my only concern, is we're gonna be doing a, someone could do a proclamation that enrages a lot of people. I, I don't know, I just, that's just my concern. I, I read the, the, uh, public comments. I, there was a letter from a citizen, and where it sounded to me that I want, that they wanted to limit the speech of council members because they did not agree with their positions. And I'm against limiting people's public expression. You know, the, at the end of the day, if I say something, write something, present something that people find objectionable, which is always gonna happen, the remedy is at the ballot box. Not by saying, Drew, you can't, you can't identify yourself as a council member. I am a council member. Get over it, sorry. Now, when I do that, I need to say, I am expressing my opinion as an individual, not taking anybody else in to that, because then if you do that, then you potentially could have a Brown Act violation. But I don't wanna have my speech stifled or limited by anybody, and I'm not gonna support it in anybody else's situation either.
Any other thoughts, questions?
I, I guess, I, um, for me, the larger question is the positioning of Clovis in the valley and our community. I thought, I saw somewhere, somewhere online was this idea of civic cohesion, that idea. And so I think for me, the, the, the social media challenge is real, and I think it's very hard for people to distinguish a title and a post that do not reflect the city. And like people who don't understand a lot of things, they don't, they can't parse that. So I, I do believe that if you have a point of view that is your own point of view, that it should not be done under the cover of your title. I, I just, I'm, maybe that's old school, maybe that's not contemporary, but people count on us. And I know, Diane, you and I had a lot of conversations about this. We just view this role entirely different. I think our job is to build community, to lift people up, everybody that we can. I think the role of the mayor is also that. So how you act with that title matters. Where you go matters. What press events you stand up at matter. Your personal opinion on some of those things, I could care less, cause that's not what your job is. So I have a very specific view of what I think the role is, and I think we get mixed up. And the thing I hear most is the, the posts that say, here's my title, and this is what I think, is saying this is what the city of Clovis thinks, cause nobody reads the fine print. And then you get into exchange with people, not you, but collectively you, and then you argue, and then you call people names, and it's like, wait, that is way too far down a rabbit hole for my, for the, the value of this community. So I just think we are harming our, our reputation as a kind of a collective. What, you could have those personal views, but I do not think the color of your title should be how you frame that, cause it gives you standing that you might not have otherwise. And I don't, I personally agree with the public comments that say, it's a bad precedent. It sounds like there are other cities, um, one of these had like Walnut Creek, and so there are, there are places that have taken some steps around that. When you have a public-facing page, if, if that's your choice, then have at it, but only talk about city business and city activity and charter cities and cool things we've talked about here or whatever. But that's where I, I draw the line. I don't find that useful, to build a community where all are welcome. We have a set of values that say it's a, it's home and it's family. And some of those posts, not, I'm not calling you out, but some of the social media posts generally, and I mean, we've had this conversation, Diane, are not welcoming, they're not inclusive, they're not, hey, we're all glad you're here. It's like, nope, that's wrong, and I'm out. And I don't feel like that's our job. So Diane and I have had many conversations, we will never agree on the role, this role right here. So I tend to agree that the social media use of the title with personal opinions is not a good look. But I don't think it's helpful to build Clovis over time. I'm probably in the minority, um, but I, I feel like we owe it to everyone who lives here that we have their back. We will take care of them the best we can. And what you read and what you, what you think about anything else, you can think all you want, but do not, do not, and do not represent me. And when you say you're the mayor of Clovis or the whatever, you speak for me, you speak for all of us. And without, without knowing if I wanna speak about any of those things, that offends me as a resident, cause I didn't elect you to speak about anything except trash or whatever. So, but it's, it's a different role of the, it's a different perception of the role. So that's where I land. I think our social media practices need to be tighter, so we don't have that confusion for folks. I get it's America, I get you can say whatever you want, all great, but, um, I, I guess I would say that. I also think it's in the behavior of the roles. So I want a mayor who is moderate, and I don't mean that in a political way, I mean, like, uh, inclusive and goes to every grind, uh, ribbon cutting, that would be you. You don't only go to businesses you like, you go to all, you don't only go to businesses that you frequent, but you represent the whole. And I think that's the job of the mayor, to pull people together and keep everybody rolling in the same way to make Clovis a great city. When we start going down these, um, kind of personal, I don't even know what to call them. I don't like the phrase culture war, but that's what they're, that's what, when you go down those paths, you start to divide our community, and that's not healthy. So I feel very strongly about that. So I would think our social media practices need a little more work, um, but I might be in the minority, I guess, of that.
Lynn, can you help ex, because, you know, I'm in the role of the mayor. When or what is something where the mayor can stand for that is ever the entire community? Because I think even in your role, Jose's role, Bob's role, even if we just said, oh, we're gonna open the senior center, two people might hate the senior center. So in other words, you know, you know what I mean? So there's never a hundred percent. So that's, I, I look at it and go, then we shouldn't be doing anything, because there's always controversy, even if it's a little bit. And so is it just where it's fifty-fifty, you should be more careful? If it's already eighty percent, you think the gauge of the community? Because that, that's where I think I have trouble, cause sometimes I may stand next to a pastor or praying in public, whatever, right? But there's also people who don't believe in prayer, people who don't go to church. So it makes it very difficult in that title to say you are for a hundred, when we're never for a hundred. So that's, and so that's why I struggle, because then I, I go, if it's not in alignment with someone, then it's wrong. But if it's in alignment, meaning in the same, where, where we both believe the same thing, it seems to be okay. And so that's, that's my struggle with whoever's gonna be in the role. Okay? Because I remember, I think, you know, Bob went and stood with PG&E for these boxes that were gonna, or AT&amp;T, and why did we stand with them? And so we, we didn't get the consensus of the council yet for him to stand to represent the city. That was the argument, and, you know, then there's a lot of places I shouldn't be standing, because I never got the cons- consensus of the council to represent certain things. So that's why I struggle with that only.
That's, that's fair. I mean, I'm sure I did things that others, I guess, like the senior center, we invested in that. So that, that's probably not a great example, right? Like.
But I'm just saying, there's, it's never a hundred percent is my example.
It's never a hundred percent, but it has to be, I mean, in my opinion, there are things that are clearly, uh, divisive and, um, to no end. There's no end that we can affect as a community. So, but I, I mean, it's probably, it's probably a, you know, it's a trap shoot on what, what that happens to be.
So if one of us students said the books in the library are okay, that is also wrong?
Yeah. Nobody asked me about the books in the library.
I just wanna make sure that I, yeah.
Yeah.
Because regardless of the issue, if it's divisive, we should be careful where we stand on those issues.
I just think we should be careful, because we, we cause harm to people for no reason. Again, have your personal views, go to church, find people that are like you in those environments. But I just, I am fiercely protective of the, our long-time history of being a civil cohesive council. We are not that anymore. I don't like that. I don't feel like that's the, we don't have that anymore. I don't think that's gonna serve us well. We can be a charter city all day long, but if the council doesn't get agreed, or get along, it's not gonna matter. So I just think there are things at risk that have made us great, that we have to be really careful about. You give them away incrementally, and you'll never get them back. Uh, and all you gotta do is look at the city of Fresno, and you have to say, do you wanna be like that? Cause that's kinda where this is headed, and that scares me. And I'm not trying to, I can't, you know, we're not gonna have enough rules to make that not happen. But we do have press conferences now. We do things that we never used to do. I heard an expression on the news this weekend, that we have to get back to sort of codifying the, what's normal. We've lost what's normal anymore. And so I, I just, again, Diane and I particularly disagree often on this. I don't like that either, and this isn't about us right now, but I just think our city has, we've never had the conflict we have, and I just don't think it's good for the collective city when we go down these paths that disenfranchise people just like that. And for what? So, anyway, that's, so I think our social media policies need some work. How you, how you present yourself on Facebook or Twitter, or I don't care what, how, how does that look like? I think it's worth a conversation. If you wanna have all your opinions, ha, all have them all day long, but don't do it representing me, as, me as a citizen, any of us, without knowing if that's really how you feel about it. So, anyway, and I'm sure I'm in the minority, but I, I do think our social media practices cause, it's the single biggest thing I hear about from the people that I talk to. Like, what is that? City take a position on that? No, we did not. So people don't pay attention, they don't read the fine print. So, anyway, enough for me, that's what I think. I just think we've, we've lost our way a little bit about what's for the good of the whole, and maybe that's the way, maybe that's where we are today as a universe, I don't know.
Any other thoughts or comments?
Seeing as how this entire conversation is really about me, um, I'll kind of share my position and thoughts on it. Number one, uh, when we run for office, we are, I, I guess I'll just speak for myself. I mean, it's, it's kind of a general way that, that people run, is you, you tell people who you are, and you tell people what you're about, and you're looking for them to entrust their voice with you in a particular elected position. And upon entering that position, there is no part of the oath of office or any of the paperwork or anything like that, that you signed to take a seat up on this dais, where you sacrifice or set aside or promise to lock it a closet, your individuality and who you are as a person, and how you presented yourself to the voters who entrusted you with the role of being on this council. And I wholeheartedly agree with Drew in that there's absolutely no chance that you will find me, uh, trying to keep someone else from speaking their opinion, from offering their perspective. You can go to my Facebook page, it is Clovis Mayor Pro Tem, Diane Pierce, and you see my opinion that I state and list very clearly at the top of it. All posts are my own, do not reflect the city. Um, and you'll find a lot of people who disagree with me, and they're allowed to do that, most of them not particularly respectfully, but that's on them. Um, and that's also a great forum for communication with the community, not just on things that happen up here, but on those things that are of interest to all of us. And so just because certain people, um, don't use social media, I mean, Lynn, you talk all the time about how you're not on Facebook, so it, it feels a little bit awkward for someone who doesn't engage on social media to want to try and limit other people's, um, interactions with the community on social media. But, um, I also think that when it comes to the ideas of proclamations, I can understand there being some concerns about that. But Drew, if you wanna give a proclamation to somebody for something, it just has your name on it, it's not being done, you know, in the chambers as though it is representative of all of us, that, that's totally fine. I don't have to agree with it for you to do that and put your name on it. And then, you know, if I wanna go out and do one that's, you know, different from that, well, you know, that's how people understand where we stand and who we are and what we think about things. So I just think it's really, I, and the other thing too, is when we have these conversations, we've had so much more engagement from the community, um, on different topics that are are relevant to the city of Clovis and the people who live here. And no, we don't all agree on things. People have come to that podium right there and criticized me for like half an hour, an hour of these meetings, telling me they don't like what I'm saying. But you know what I do? I sit here, I look at them, I hear what they have to say, I'm respectful about it. And I'd like to think that people would do the same for me in my opinions when I share them. Um, so I don't, I don't also buy into the idea that there's damage to the community when we're able to have those kinds of conversations and people come and engage those that they elected to this office. Um, I think we've seen from different community surveys and things that we've did, even just with the outreach we did on Measure Y, this community trusts this council. I happen to be a part of this council. I don't think the city is suffering immense damage from the two and a half years that I've been sitting here. I think we're a great community, and I think people are really engaged and involved in what we're doing, and I think it's fantastic. Um, as far as any of those other titles, that just happens to be the title. Like Drew said, he, he is council member Drew Pear, Drew Pierce, Drew Besenzer.
What? Oh, God, new problem to solve.
Drew Besenzer.
Whether, whether he goes out there and states himself.
Yes. Ah, here we go.
That opens so many doors. It's, I don't know. Thank you, Diane. Sorry. But, uh, you know, it's just, yeah, it's just a fact of that is part of who we are. And if people think that when Mayor Von Moana Tua goes out and says something that he's speaking for the entire council, that he's speaking for the entire city, he can't control that, he's not responsible for that, the same way I'm not responsible for those things. You put it out that you're speaking as yourself. Um, we are very clear, we have so many city Facebook pages and social media accounts that are clearly representative of the city and those positions and those activities and those things that are going on. So, I mean, I don't know how many more times we're gonna have to have this conversation. But I think to Mike Brandini's comment, it's been working pretty well. I still would like to talk about putting things on the agenda, but even that's been working pretty well lately. So, um, I won't go there tonight. But I think we're doing well, and I think we have, again, more engagement from the community. We're all gonna be individuals, I think we're gonna continue being individuals, and that's just, I think that's just the facts of the matter. I guess just that one comment, just because I don't use it doesn't mean I don't understand it and see the impact that it has on kids in our community and all. But I hear from Mike, the folks that I talk to and represent, so using it and having, having some sense about what it is, I think, are not related. But I hear you. I mean, we're not gonna agree for sure, but I, I just, I, that's, I made my point.
And we're talking about social media, regardless of whether we identify ourselves by our title or not, they know who we are. You know, I have a personal Facebook page. Most of my stuff is hummingbirds, flowers and
Turtles.
the occasional political comment. And people say, is this your council comp, opinion? It's not on the agenda. You know, you just, you know, sometimes, well, someone made a comment about Diane and I, and he's in chambers sometimes. And it was just like, really, you're gonna throw that mud on my personal Facebook page? If folks need to understand that, you know, there shouldn't be a disclaimer and every time I want to say, but I'm only speaking for me, well, of course I'm speaking for me. It's coming out of my mouth. And the remedy is at the ballot box. If you don't like anything that we say do, not do, acts of omission, acts of commission, every four years, out.
I, I think there was things brought up with regards to, so we talked about the title, but logos and flags, are we gonna leave that? Do we need to touch that at all, of using our logo and our flag? Because there's comments from the public on that. We're good? Okay. Okay. Well, I, I am on the position that these individuals are responsible for whatever they say and whatever they do. And whatever we do, you guys can make that decision. If we want to keep putting the flag behind me when I speak or on my lapel when I speak, because it's always there, our logo, when I am out in public. You know, I, I own it. And if I'm gonna write a letter on my letterhead that gets out to the public, I have to own whatever is there. And so I, I think that's there. I think our communications director has given us instruction and also our legal department with regards to representing the public and social media. And so we are compliant at least to the law as best we can. And when we're not, then I think we're, we have some checks on that end as well from our staff to make sure that we are compliant. And so I, I don't hear any additions, changes. I think we have the current protocols. And so until something else comes up in which one of the council members would like an item to be voted upon, we're good with what we have. Okay? All right. We're gonna close that one. I think that ends the hearing items. We are now gonna move to city manager comments. Andy, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the week off and the grace on that. I've got quite a few... I may have been, I may have noticed. We got quite a few events coming up for this late summer and the fall. On August 23rd, 23rd, I'm sorry. The senior center is hosting a fundraiser dinner. So check that out if that interests you. There's a whole bunch of restaurants that are participating. A little taste of Clovis. And then the Clovis Mobile Rec is continuing through August. We're super excited about extending this. And the next one coming up is at West Cal Two Park on, uh, 13, just in a few days. And then Century Park and David McDonald Park. We also are offering residents a countertop compost pail. There's an event where you can go grab one. So there's an event there for you. Then the senior prom. So my wife saw this and asked how old, and I said, not yet. So, but super fun. You get the seniors out there at the senior center. Uh, we have another movie night coming at the Villatrine in Loma Vista. I think the location is correct. Yeah. And then we have a special event for Miss California. Our very own Miss Clovis is competing in Miss California. She's having a...
She's already won. She's going to Miss America.
She's won? Sorry, I'm off one. She's moving on to Miss...
Miss America.
Miss America.
Yes.
So she's having a send-off event this Saturday from 2:00 to 5:00. So let's cheer her on. This one's sold out, but the picture's too cute. Get in yoga, keep an eye on that. And with that, I have one or two other announcements. One is, and I'm not sure how Amy feels about this, but I wanted to honor her as she has been awarded as the, one of the top woman professionals by the Marjorie Mason Center this year. So our very own Amy Hans, she's hiding over there in the corner. I'm proud of her and how she's represented our city and exceptional and earned reward. And then also on the dais is the sales tax report that we just received today, showing Clovis is relatively flat. Those numbers are just right before Measure Y went into place. So we won't have really good reports on Measure Y probably for a few more months, but just wanted to provide that to you. We are flat. We are bucking the trend in some areas compared to the rest of the state. So we'll keep an eye on that. And then there's also a council-directed items report on the dais showing where we're at on status of those. With that, I'll turn it back to you, mayor.
Now we'll move to council comments. Councilmember Basco? Councilmember Besseger? Councilmember Ashbeck?
On the council projects, it says that the Peg Boss Plaza is gonna be completed in August. That's like tw, you know, like 20 minutes from now? Are we gonna get it done this month?
That's the hope. We are waiting on a flagpole that's been backward and doing some additional improvements, but it's under construction right now.
So we'll be able to schedule an event soon in the fall and...
Yeah, we have a team working on that event right now.
Get Perry out there? Okay. And then, do I have any Measure C things to report?
I don't think so.
Two words were never spoken. Measure C is continuing along the, yeah, so I think they're, they're doing actually okay. I mean, the steering committee meets on Wednesday to come up with categories. And I think despite all odds, they're, they're doing okay. So, that's it.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Pierce?
I figure you will speak to the ribbon cutting that we attended, but other than that, I have nothing.
Yeah. Mid Valley opened their office in Old Town, so I'm glad they chose Old Town and, and so they're there. And then also beyond the barracks, they opened up, I don't know that, what the center is called, but it's right next to the museum.
Saddleback Village.
Saddleback Village. And so they wanted to extend an invitation to the council. They have a Patriots Gala at the Regency Event Center on November 14th. I'll give this to Andy so he can send it to all of us. And then the, the wall that heals, it's a traveling Vietnam memorial. It's a replica of the actual Vietnam memorial out in DC. It's coming here to California and it'll be at the David McDonald Park, October 9th through the 12th. It is a 24-hour display. So it's, it's there, it's virtually. And then I'll give this also to Andy so he can give it to everybody, so the community and all of us can go and attend. And then we will be presenting the, our proclamation to Miss California on Saturday. So will Nathan and our assemblyman and our senator and our congressman, so they all will be there. Hopefully, the community's trying to give her a send-off, so we invited the chamber, the rodeo, Old Town. Just the community can come out and be proud that it's Miss Clovis going to Miss America. And then that's all I have. And so now we're gonna move into closed session. That's all we have. Thank you, everybody, for attending. On, on the public comment, it'll, on the closed session, it'll be conference with rural state property negotiators. And it's the Northeast Property, I mean, while we're international. Is there somebody here who would like to speak on this or anybody in the public? You can do so. And Scott, are we anticipating anything to report on?
We're not requesting action on this item tonight, but any public comment is allowed before we go to closed session.
Yeah. Anyone? Okay. Thank you. Have a good evening. We'll go to closed session.